Don't look so guilty.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back into order. We opened in closed session at 6:45 to have discussions of litigation regarding Jones v. Town of Harwich. And so, we're now in open session and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is weekly briefing. Hearing none. Public comment and announcements. I'd just like at this time to take this opportunity, one of our more active committee members, Reverend Malcolm McDowell, passed away unexpectedly last week at his memorial service yesterday at Christ Church Episcopal, which was overwhelmingly attended by most of the, it appeared, the hierarchy of clergy from the state of Connecticut where he was an active minister before retiring to Harwich. On retiring to Harwich, he became an associate minister at Christ Church, was a member of our youth services committee, involved himself at the family pantry and as a volunteer with the Council on Aging, and was a member of the Barnstable County Human Rights Commission. I think his efforts on human rights and youth services and senior services will be missed and I'd like to have a brief moment of silence in his honor. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to follow in consent agenda items. A, vote to approve regular police officer appointment recommendation and I'll just point out if I could, that what we're talking about here is a request by the police chief to appoint Tyler J. Vermete as a special police officer effective December 8, 2013, and then effective March 2, 2014, to appoint him as a regular police officer, once the academy work is finished, if you will. And second, that we vote to approve the Caleb Chase fund request, the amount of $700 to N-Star.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, no public hearings or presentations. Next item, old business. First item, revised budget message, possible vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know that I had sent some revised wording and some other issues to Mr. Lumentia and this, what is in here has none of those changes in it, so I took the liberty of putting together and copying them so that we could discuss those changes. Because we're getting a little long in the tooth here, I don't know if anybody else's changes got made. It didn't seem so.
I don't really know.
Looking from this, it's the same, basically the same budget message.
Is that version the one that you shared with me a couple of days ago or something? Okay. I think if we could look at this, because I do agree, Mr. Chairman, that we're getting kind of late in this process, that I had gone through these recommendations and although I would just say that I still think we should be throwing in some words of but and under it, I accept the fact that we are, we are, but I think the wording that's been done here improves the message and makes it palatable certainly for me.
This is the changes, I think, after, in paragraph three, about the middle of it, started out with, as the town contemplated the regional school, with the expected opening of the new Monomore Regional High School, that's what has been, I would eliminate that and put something like this in. I think it, I think it reads a little clearer and I think some of these sentences are way too long. If I forget what I'm reading by the end of it, the sentence is too long.
You have to take a breath.
You have to take a breath.
Mr. Chair, I'm comfortable with this, although I don't, I think we moved, we don't want to put something in like this, we want to put this in so we can vote it and move on.
Also, on the second, on the... On the second page, where we go through three points and it goes through point three above is critical and goes through the fee things, I would probably, I'm going to suggest that we delete the end of the paragraph, which says, "To ensure that granting scholarships are done fairly, specific set of criteria, blah, blah, blah." In rethinking this, it seems like that's a very operational issue and that's in Mr. Lawton's purview to make sure that this is happening, as opposed to a budget message?
Mm-hmm.
Because any time we give scholarships, they should have a set of criteria, they should be documented, they should be approved, they should be tracked.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept Ms. Buda's amendments to the budget meeting.
Message.
Second.
Message?
Second.
Question, just so I'm clear, because I would like to get this done this week. On the first, on that third paragraph...
Respectfully stated.
I just want to be sure, where it starts within the one, two, three, fourth sentence?
Into the fourth line.
And then it's with?
With the expected opening of...
Okay, that's where it starts.
That's where this starts.
And does it, it goes all the way to the end?
To the end.
Okay.
So I would replace all of that with this.
Yes. Okay, whoops. So I just want to make sure we take a lop off of the sections.
Is that acceptable?
Let me, actual savings will be determined...
And with the whole...
Transition phase is completed.
The whole, to the end of the paragraph. Gotcha, thank you very much.
It's detailed, the town, still in...
Out.
Now, is the material in italics new?
Um, yes, I was, some of it are the same words, but the italics were my revised wording.
Okay.
So I just basically rewrote the whole thing, but, and as I was going through, I started, my changes, I put in italics, but then there were so many, I probably should have just, this is just trying to make sure it's clear what's changed.
I think the sentiments are, what we talked about before, is just, it's a little clearer.
We cleaned it up.
So that's why I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
And then the section at the bottom, also on page three?
I think you meant number...
Section on the bottom, also on page...
To ensure?
Yeah. I think it's on the second page.
The one to get into the scholarship police, which we don't need.
It's on the second page.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, that's right.
You have on page three, it's the second page, okay.
I probably meant under item three.
Item three, okay.
It's just that last sentence, two sentences. I think that was in there, if I could, in relation to chasing down grandparents and that kind of thing that we got rid of last week.
Right, the chasing down grandparents should be gone, yes, it is.
It is.
Interesting concept.
They can't run too fast.
I'm not as fast as I used to be, so...
Are you recommending taking out to ensure the granting and everything after that?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because it's operational, not budget.
Yeah, it's not a budget message.
All right, well...
We have a motion to second, so we can...
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we have an approved amended budget message.
Right.
Next item is ambulance waiver policy, third reading.
I think I made the revisions that the board had requested, so I think we're in good shape if you accept this, as revised.
If I remember correctly, the, we swapped two and three?
Yes.
To put the billing in front of the who's accepting insurance?
It is helpful.
I remember that, yep.
And we eliminated the section concerning denial of various permits.
Right.
That's...
Run you into the ground.
Yes.
That's right. That's out. And I think we also added the language that made sure it was clear that the waiver administrator could at any time stop the process if the payment was made.
Mr. Chairman, since this is the, I guess, fourth reading now, I would move that we...
Third reading.
Is it third? Oh, yeah, okay. I would move that we adopt the policy as presented for the third reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
From the audience, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could I just ask, do we have a waiver administrator at this point in time?
I will...
Be up to the Board of Selectmen to choose one of their own.
Well, since Peter had volunteered, I will nominate Peter Hughes to be the waiver administrator.
Second.
And at least you're here when you got nominated.
Ouch.
Don't hold it back.
It's a stick.
It's been moved and seconded, appointing Peter Hughes as the waiver administrator for the Board of Selectmen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, new business, Allen Harbor access grant, Mr. Rendon.
I think as background, Mr. Chairman, we discussed this last week and, if you don't mind, John, do you want to sit up? If that's okay.
Sure.
And the discussion involved whether or not the town could save any money, as was suggested by a representative from Allen Harbor, by eliminating a boat wash item within the chart that Mr. Rendon had done several months ago, and we find that the state had already eliminated that as an option. So the funding, as he has recasted in the memo dated October 10, 2013, from Mr. Rendon to me, outlines the costs. He has also discussed in the note, the issue of the paving, and you may recall that one of the issues that would happen on boat storage is there could be some work done on the boats and with the porous paving that is being proposed, there may be some pollution which might get into the ground. That was not, I was not clear on that at the last meeting. And I think Mr. Rendon has spoken with representatives from Allen Harbor and if it's acceptable, he could report his discussion and add any items to your memo of October 10.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendon, Harbor Master. I think Mr. Lawton recapped well what's in the memo. I have talked to Craig, we've had numerous discussions, Craig LeBlanc, general manager at Allen Harbor Marine, and, you know, the issue of the pervious concrete that has been recommended as the option to resurface the parking lot by the engineers, because of that type of system, it would essentially eliminate Craig and his staff from being able to do what they do currently, as part of that lease, when they store their boats on our parking lot, which is, you know, change in oil, change in lower unit oil, clean in boats, general maintenance of outboards and inboards, they do throughout the winter. And if they could not do that, then the lease really is just to park their boat and not touch it after that, and that doesn't serve their purposes. And so, I have asked coastal engineering to come up with a estimate on what it would cost to install a traditional drainage system with regular pavement, and they are working on that. I don't have that figure for you tonight, they're hoping to have it done by Friday, but the general consensus is it will be more expensive than what is being proposed by the pervious concrete system. So, how much more expensive? I don't know yet, but it would be an added cost. So, you know, it's, I think if Craig were here, he would tell you that if the decision was to go with the pervious system, he would likely look for an alternative place to store his boats.
Which we might be able to provide at Sacquetucket Harbor through, obviously, a bid. I believe that's true.
Mr. Valentine?
John, I'm just a little confused on this, because I'm looking at the wash pad versus the parking lot. And my understanding has been that, the pressure, the pressure is a bad pun, the reason that we've gone with a wash pad in various places is to contain the things you're talking about and actually not use the entire parking lot for that.
If I understand your question...
It seems like he's trying to use the, am I right, I mean, he wants to do a lot of this stuff on the parking lot...
That's to pressure wash the bottom of boats, he's doing that on his wash pad.
Wash pad.
So they have a recycle system where they're catching...
So he was not doing washing on the parking lot, but he's afraid that this would prevent him from doing the normal maintenance on the boat?
That's right, engine maintenance, outboards, change in oil, change in lower unit grease, doing regular, you know, maintenance on their engines. They currently do, when they park their, when they store their boats on our lot for the winter, they're doing maintenance on those things, not just washing boats.
Mr. Hughes?
So they couldn't, as currently designed with this concrete, they would not find any value or want to lease the parking lot, which would mean that we would be on the plus side with the state grant, right, the 61 or whatever percent, as opposed to doing something else, which would get us to a 50-50 split with the state if we accommodate the boatyard.
That's right.
All right, so the only question now is, what would it take to make it so that that parking lot is usable or acceptable to the boatyard, which you're saying would be higher cost, and we would take less money from the state, which means we're going to pony up more money at that point in time, which obviously we've got to recover in the course of the lease or whatever, so...
That's correct.
It sounds like, it sounds like the option is to go to Sacquetucket Harbor or something like that and move forward with the design unless there's some reason not to, although you're going to get some estimates, I guess.
Well, I mean, one thing that Craig mentioned to me, and I think it's worth mentioning here, is that, you know, if we go this route, we lose the opportunity to store boats at Allen Harbor from here on, you know, I mean, there are restrictions that we have to comply with when we go to a public access route, and just so everybody understands that. That's...
Rendon?
Question, one thing that I didn't, maybe I missed it in these memos, but if we went the route of, you know, the paved, et cetera, which would take the 637 total cost up to something else, and we have a town meeting article for 250, which was going to cover our 38 percent share, where does the rest of the money come from? Because regardless of how many years it takes to recover, you know, 20 years to recover this extra money, people are going to want to be paid now, so what is, what would be the proposal for where that 68,000 would come up? Because right now...
You'd have to go to town meeting. I mean, and the way we're doing this project is in two phases. We're doing the bulkhead now, because we have the money to do it now, that's going to start in November, and when the state money is available, we don't have a definite date, a definite date for that, Doug Cameron thinks it could be a year, year and a half kind of length of time, so that's when the second phase of it would go. So we'd have to, we'd have to come up with $68,000 via town meeting.
Plus, if we wanted to pave the parking lot, so it's 68 plus.
Plus, and I don't know what that plus is yet, but we will.
So basically, I think what you're doing is repairing the bulkhead and then you're stopping, sort of, and then going to do the parking lot or whatever, once you get more money.
That's right.
And I think it's not just the paving, but my understanding is that there's also a drainage design that would also have to be done.
Right, because it still can't get into the harbor.
That's correct, so it's not, I don't believe it's just a load of hot mix and we're done. It's substantially more than that.
As I understand the technical aspects of this, the porous pavement is more expensive than regular hot mix to put down, but on the backside, you eliminate a whole bunch of the drainage structure.
Yes, sir.
And piping and boxes and all of that stuff, where, so, you know, in the case I know, Provincetown, their repaving of Commercial Street, they did with the porous pavement. And as to doing work on boats, there's the concern about spilling stuff like oil and a variety of other fluids, but also other maintenance that typically gets done after the wash down occurs, you park the boat and then you scrape it and sand it, and that stuff is generally pretty easy to collect, but typically, there's a final wash down, which you'd have to then figure out some way to collect all that water.
Well, as far as that is concerned, they have to do that at their wash pad.
Yeah.
I mean, by law, they have to collect that water and recycle it, so they wouldn't be doing that on the pavement, but...
But routine maintenance.
But they do a lot of maintenance on it.
And the problem is, you know, when they start packing up the lot, if you need to move a boat out to get it over to the wash pad, you, you know, if it's the first one in the row, it's great.
That's right.
If it's the fifth one and you have to move six other boats to get to the, it becomes problematic, so it's very understandable why they, what the porous pavement wouldn't be of the interest.
Is this money, not to be cynical, but is this protected? Would we lose this? Does the state guarantee this? Is this put away in some funds that they can't touch, or how's this work, do you know?
Other than Doug Cameron's draft land management agreement that I think is in your packet, that is the commitment that he's provided me. I called him to verify that if we chose not to continue the lease, that we would still be eligible for the initial percentages of 61 and 38, which he said, yes, we are.
And the funding source is the Seaport, I forget the...
Seaport Advisory Council, no, that's a different pot of money.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a separate pot for, it's part of the Department of Fish and Game, public access.
Sometimes those pots are set aside and sometimes they're not, that's why I was trying to get at.
This is a pot that's set aside, I mean, arguably, the state legislature could redirect it, but, I mean, it would be, it's not something that with a little bureaucratic sleight of hand is going to disappear. It would be a major effort.
So what do we need to do? Bring this back next week when you have the full information, or are we done?
Well, it sounds like whatever it's going to be, it's going to be more than $68,000, and I think it begs a different question, which is, do we want to go back to town meeting and ask for, from 250, upping it to, say, another 100? Do we want to do that at town meeting?
I would recommend you not. I would recommend that you authorize us to proceed, get the final documents put together to the 61 percent, and bring this back simply for your signature. I think as part of that, probably just for the record, that we do plan to, next year, when we go out to bid for storage, that we would be using a portion of Sacquetucket Harbor as an option for whomever wished to bid. So there is a relief valve, if you want to use that term.
Sounds like the way to go, unless something comes up in the next week.
Nope.
You know what that...
There's Craig there now.
Oh, good, good.
Okay. So...
Top of the night.
Thank you.
You can sit down now.
You can sit down.
If it was the other way, we would have told you to go home. But where we are now is, it's been reported that the, from the harbors, Allen Harbor's point of view, the limitations of having a porous pavement places on what you can and can't do to boats that are stored there would preclude you from having interest in using it as a storage area, because you'd basically not be able to do any maintenance work while they were there, and so would be looking for a different site.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Or different material, you know, going the traditional route.
Yeah.
We spoke to that, you know.
Yeah. The problem we have is to go to a different material on top of taking the hit of the reduced percentage participation by the state, which is already 68,000. Apparently, the, using the routine, standard material and the conventional drainage system, we're talking significantly, or somewhat more money than the solution we have now, and we're already having a problem with the 68,000. So, I think the general consensus of the members present tonight are that it's best to just move ahead and when we lease, go for a parking lot lease, that that parking lot be Sacquetucket next year. So, any comments?
Well, certainly, the, without the ability to work on the boats, the storage and the ability to work sort of need to go hand in hand, for anybody, really, if you can't do any work at the site, storage is nice, but I guess I don't know if we could ever make that work. That would be a real challenge to have to do maintenance of any type on one half, one area, and then to move the boats constantly to do it. Many of those boats we put in that lot aren't, we have to hire someone to move them, an outside contractor, and they just, it's not an easy thing. You place them in certain areas, so you have the people that go in first in the front and the people that go in later in the back, so it would be a real project for us to work with that. As far as Sacquetucket goes, it's certainly an option for us, that we would consider strongly. It's probably better than a lot of other things we've looked at around town, as far as where boat storage can happen, we've looked into that through the years. Just we would lose the convenience of walking 100 feet to work on a boat versus having to travel back and forth and if you forget something or you need a part. But we may be interested in bidding in the future if the storage was at Sacquetucket, but we'll have to cross that bridge and we'll get to it, I guess.
Sure.
See what happens.
Our problem is with funding is to, if we were to go for the higher figure, it would take a trip back to town meeting. The only other possible source would be to put in an application to the Finance Committee for the Reserve Fund Transfer. Don't think that's going to be a winner.
Sure.
This, that's typically for, you know, an emergency that's been caused by something physically breaking that's critical or a weather event of that nature. This, these issues really weren't foreseen when we did the budget last year, but I, I, I think this would be hard pressed for the Finance Committee to really consider this a true emergency that they'd want to use their limited amount of reserve funds on, especially with winter coming and the unknown overtime costs that come up during that due to wind emergen, weather emergencies that we have. So I think, and given how we think this year's town meeting or town budget is going to be under stress anyway, there isn't going to be a lot of extra money around to augment additional projects like this, so. This is Ms. Sebula.
Um, question, if we decided, if we went to the route of going back to town meeting and it failed, would we have the ability to go back to the state fisheries and wildlife and say, we'd really like the other deal? Or once we make a deal, that's the deal? So that's not really an option?
I don't know. I'd have to ask him, but, you know, they have to plan their projects just like anybody else. So they're going to be planning for our project based upon the amount. And we're not the only project. There's a bunch of projects in the state, obviously. So I, I think we would be hard pressed to do that.
Just wanted to ask the question.
My experience has been that you, when, when you're in line, you need to stay in line. If you get out of line, then you go to the bottom.
So when we make a deal, that's the deal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
As one last attempt, I guess, I'm assuming that Allen Harbor Marina wouldn't, wouldn't want to front this additional cost or whatever and credit it towards lease payments for the next five or six years or something. I don't know. I'm just trying to be a little creative and so. No, I'd say, I'm making this up. Say the number was a hundred thousand dollars that you had to come up with was the difference whether Allen Harbor wanted to participate in that and, you know, take that as a credit against lease payments for the next whatever amount of time. I don't know.
That would, that would be a consideration. I guess we, we don't know the number to pave it traditionally at this point. But I'd say that the door is open on participation from us, but certainly it would require a longer lease period to make it safe. So depending on what the number is, if we would have a longer commitment, and we, over the years, we, we'd be interested in, excuse me, in that anyway. I know it, right now, it's a three-year lease with a two-year option to renew. And if any part of this could turn into a longer commitment, longer arrangement between the town and, and us, that would make things a lot easier to, to look down.
So why don't we get the number, which you'll have maybe by Friday or something? And why don't we then say, okay, here's the cost difference, here's the analysis again, based on what we want to do? And then, again, I'm making up a number, you know, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars, and you folks come back and say, hey, as long as we were guaranteed, we could, you know, add the right to that for, I don't know, eight years, nine years, whatever, then we would consider, you know, making the contribution, if you will, or paying that share. I don't know if it works or not, but.
How long is it that we can do a lease for without town meeting approval?
Three years.
Three years?
So you'd need town meeting approval to go to ten.
But that's, that's okay.
That's not asking for money. That's just saying, can we go spend somebody else's money, quite frankly?
And then you'd have to do, you'd have to do a bid based upon this contribution, I guess.
Yeah.
Upfront. So, so I guess the bid document would have to say that the, in our mythical example, that the bidder would have to place one hundred thou, in a, for a ten-year lease, you'd have to put a hundred thousand dollars on the table. And then you'd put that in your gift account to protect it. Should not go in the general fund.
That's a business decision then that Marina can make.
Yes, it is.
I mean.
Can we then suggest that we re-agenda this for Monday night?
Sure.
To get the sixty-eight thousand and what the final number is? Sir, you can discuss with your, you know, think about how that would work for you, what you would need, and whether or not you two can work this out and come back Monday night with what we do?
Well, you know by Monday night whether that's.
I don't know what.
I mean, I may have the figure Monday night, but I don't know.
Yeah, I, I would need a little time.
I think, given that, John, you don't think you're going to get the number until Friday, it can't go out as part of the packet material then, so.
Right, it's two weeks.
Why don't we, why don't we take, continue this for two weeks?
When does the state need, if I may, Mr. Chairman? When does the state want to know on our, our percentage? Just so we don't lose that. Hmm? Two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago. I mean.
I remember that from last week. It was, it was two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll call Doug. If there's any issue, I'll let you know.
Okay. If there's any issue, we'll put it on the agenda next week.
Otherwise, the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
So we're trying to be creative. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
One, one other consideration is, is certainly Sakotucket wouldn't be worth as much to us.
Yeah.
Back on the travel times. So right now, the, the minimum bids, or recently, has been ten thousand. We exceed that by quite a bit, so that, our number would go down.
Yeah. And, you know, you would probably, in operation, do your operations over there, need to put together a, a maintenance trailer to, so you're, you have some easy way to haul hopefully everything you need over, so you're not running back to the shop constantly.
Right.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, this.
Yeah, but even still, even with that, it's, it's, you lose time, yeah.
The security for us, the people are, like the idea that the boats are right there, wear right there. I know it's not, it's a bad spot, but it's just a lot of, a lot of pieces to it.
You have the Harbor Masters staff there.
Right, right.
We think they're pretty good.
We are, we, as, as do I. The customers like the idea of.
Yeah.
The people they're paying, the, we're right there.
Sure.
Electricity, we plug the boats, have electricity requirements. Ah, there's a, I could go on and on.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're open to being creative, to, to make this work too.
Okay.
Certainly.
Thank you. So we'll take it up.
Great.
Two weeks from now, unless we have, that's an issue. And if not, we'll take it up this coming week. You could find out tomorrow from them. So we have that, we, if, if, we need to put it on the agenda for next Monday. We, I can know that by Thursday, so it can go out in timely fashion. Okay? Thank you. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, um, Town Administrator's Report. Do we have one?
I had nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Reports from Sluckman.
We're going so fast, so just very briefly. We had a meeting a few days ago, we being a couple of us from the Water Quality Task Group regarding outreach for the wastewater plans.
Yep.
With some folks from the Cape Cod Commission. They've hired, and I forget the name of the firm now, professional firm to develop a list of survey questions. And the hope is, is, and the same company will do a telephone survey. The initial survey, and I, I'll, I'll email that to you, Bob, see if I haven't, so you can include that in the packet, so everyone can read that.
Done.
They're, they're drafting or finalizing. But the initial survey is intended to, to get very basic information. Remind you, the, the overall thought was that we needed to better understand not only the demographics, but the backgrounds of people, what their interests are, so that one message to both ways, input and also better understanding, one message doesn't fit all. People do things differently, whether it's how they get the message, whether it's, you know, TV or Twitter or Tweeter or one of those, or whatever they are, or Channel eighteen and so on. The other one is the message. People want to get the message in different, different ways as well. So they're trying to get that basic information, you know? And once that's done, then they'll probably have some follow-up surveys to fine tune it. So whenever we get, as we move along our CWMP, the hope is, is that we can direct our educational efforts in a way that gets to the people. Because I think, I think we all agree right now that we're not doing that. Not one broad message is the way the world works anymore. People look at things differently, so. I, I'll just say that, and I'm hoping that people watching, if they get that request, I'd telephone for a survey by, for Harwich. They'll go ahead with the survey. I, I know personally, I have a tendency to hang up on people doing surveys. I'm hoping I'm a bad example, and people in this case will go ahead and answer the survey questions.
I, I have a tendency, if I can identify who, who the people are.
You'll lead them on?
That are doing the survey. If there's somebody I like, I'm honest. If there's somebody I don't like, I lie. But.
We've put that in public.
I'll, I'll phone that in to have people beware.
I mean, I think a lot of people do that. But anyway, to that end, is another form of getting the word out. Paul Nitwicky and I did a, a radio show this afternoon, or at twelve-thirty on W O M R, talking about wastewater issues.
Okay, good.
Process, you know, use, use every chance you can to get the word out. Linda?
I think that from the Interview Subcommittee, a couple of months ago, we had put out a request for all the boards, committees and commissions if they would do that seventy-five type word description of what their committee does, so that we can put it on the website and increase the ability for people to want to volunteer for committees. We got about a third response, and actually, that's better than I expected. So if the rest of the committees that have not responded, if they would please respond, and thank you very much to the committees that did.
Peter?
Just point out or remind everybody that tomorrow evening at the High School Cafeteria from seven to nine is the workshop, I guess I'll call it, on, on Route one twenty-four Pleasant Lake. I know a number of us plan to be there. And kind of informally before the meeting, we're trying to organize sometime eleven o'clock or later on Friday with link to maybe if the weather's okay to walk one twenty-four, as we had said previously, we try and do. So if we can work that out and let us know and bring umbrellas.
Also on Wednesday night, isn't the Middle School Repurpose Committee having a presentation?
Yes.
For the public over at the community center? And to, so we actually have two?
And that's the reason why the one twenty-four project meeting is at the High School Cafeteria. We are overloading our meeting room facilities for tomorrow night. As to the issues you brought up about the appointments, the town appointments, I had, on Friday at the Sluckman's Association meeting, we had a presentation by the Cape Cod Young Professionals Association. And one of the things they are doing is encouraging their members to take an active participation in their towns. And so what I asked Sandy to do today was to send our list of vacancies to them, so they can publicize that. They have some eight hundred members that have joined their association. Hopefully, a few of them live in Harwich, and maybe we'll get one or two volunteers out of that. Also on appointments, there was a, one of our committee chairman raised an issue about people who serve on more than one committee that may, or may have, may hear the same matter at two different committees. And I think we should ask for a comment from our attorney on the propriety of that, because it is interesting. If you vote on an application at one committee and then you sit and hear the same application on another committee, do you have a conflict or, you know, having already made a decision?
I would, in the case you're speaking of, I would strongly argue no, because there are different purviews, different regulations. They don't, there are some committees that would be true, because they, they, you know, Pine Board and ZBA, for instance, because they build on each other.
Yeah.
But these have, both by regu, by state regulation, bylaws have different aspects you're looking at.
Yeah.
In this case, they're, they're pretty good, because they're completely separated. In fact, in this case, it's beneficial, because we've always, let me say it differently. It's beneficial, because it, it would increase communication between communities that we've had, we struggled with in the past.
That may, that's true, but I, I, I still think we should ask for an opinion on this issue. You know, we all thought it would be good to have some business background in running for political office, but apparently our Ethics Commission has decided in one case that that may not be so.
Well, I went, I went all that conclusion from that, actually. I still think business backgrounds would be, would be very helpful.
But, uh, I.
That goes, you're going in another direction that my concern was, was different than that.
So, but I think, I think it would be good to make sure that we get a proper vetting of this.
And I, and the Interview Subcommittee would like to have that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I just give it a life.
You know.
I, I do, I do think, though, I agree with Larry in that, in the case to which you're referring, I think there's been enough, both committees have two very different set of responsibilities and authorities, and they really do not overlap. So I don't see, I personally don't see a conflict.
Yeah.
Look at Jack. Did you say?
Had my tons of sense.
Yeah.
Done.
Okay. Anything further?
No, sir.
Anybody got a motion?
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Rest ox one.
Rest ox one, yay!